Average number of interruptions that those customers saw. And the bar is the average for the municipality. And the diamond above it is the ComEd system average. So for 2009, the system average was about one. And for the-
Which means what? What is one?
The average customer saw one outage last year in 2009.
But others saw ten.
Correct. And below that, the bar is the municipality. So the average customer, again, this is for the average for the municipality, it was just under about a half of an outage. 2008, it's got two different colors on that bar. The darker color is the non-storm number. And then when you add in the effects of storm we had last August. I'm sorry, this was August of '08. It bumped that number up for the municipality. But again, between .5 and one for an average number of interruptions per customer. Now, our reliability group looks at the performance of each of those lines, the ones that you mentioned, and they identify issues on the lines, pocket areas on the lines that have problems. And then they order up remediation activities such as reconducting wire, replacing cable, installing the automated switches.
What is a CAIDI again, non-storm? What does that mean?
The bottom graph, actually in the middle-
No, the middle. Yeah, the middle on the right.
That's the duration, the average duration of the interruption.
Okay, and it's building, as you can see.
That one is above the system average to a little over 200 minutes.
Yeah, it looks like Wood Dale is jumping ahead of the others. We're, back in 2005, we, if you can say it that way, we lag behind the other municipalities in problems. But now we're jumping ahead. And again, is ComEd replacing the materials or the underground or overhead, whatever it is, that's causing most of the outages? Again, it's not the storms. Your own statistics here show that storms come and go, and we know that. You know, we realize that, and we all, in a way, we expect to go out with a bad storm like you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
But now we're just, I'd like to talk about every day-
Sure.
From day to day, what's going on? And what we can do as a city to initiate some kind of program in ComEd to perhaps boost up Wood Dale again, like you seem to have done before.
And that's the reason we're out here, you know, doing these types of meetings, is to hear that, engage the reliability people to look for those pockets where there are either above-average number of interruptions on a circuit or identify what the cause of the extended outages are. The underground cable, everybody loves underground service. They don't see the wires. Unfortunately, an outage on an underground system often takes longer to restore than an outage on the overhead. Wire comes down, something breaks, transformer blows. We've got access to it. We can get up in a bucket and fix it. Underground cable fails, we need to come out, do the switching to get the customers off that affected piece of cable. We have to come out, dig up the, have to locate the issue, dig it up, fix it, and bury it back in, so-
You do look at it by circuits as well, do you not? I mean, you don't have it listed here-
That's how we look at it, is by circuit.
Because you don't have listed how many for each circuit, per se, outages. You do list the circuits, but not how many per each. And there's probably seven here with just one.
We monitor that on our own. And that's the way we monitor the performance of our system, is circuit by circuit. So we look at W-689, for example, and we say, okay, how many outages did it have? What type were they? Were they storm-related? Were they equipment-related? Were they tree-related? If they were tree-related, we'll dispatch our tree trimmers to come out and look for places that the trees have grown faster than normal between our trim cycles.
Are there any other questions from? Okay, if you have a question from the audience, you'll need to come up to the podium, and our manager will make sure that's turned on. And we'll need your name and address, and then your comments.
My name's Carl Promenia. I live at 122 Florina Court. And observing your man-hours on this tremendous storm you had, you had 226,000 hours for office personnel. You probably had every bit of that for overhead personnel. So if I were to hypothetically say it was 500,000 hours, and with your overhead linemen getting double time, time and a half, and whatever your office personnel get, I'd have to say you probably spent over $35 million without talking about your equipment. You mentioned the problems you have with underground service. I'm afraid I don't agree with you. What would you say the percentage of work that was completed in this last storm was attributed to overhead versus underground?
The majority of the damage was done to the overhead system.
All right, if we look at a residential area, pick any residential area. You have fences, you have overhead lines, they feed two houses. You can't get back there with a bucket truck. You have to get a lineman with hooks, he has to climb that pole. You have to manually take everything there. In today's market, the 90% of the work that's done today underground is done with directional boring machines. You use a directional boring machine, you do minimum damage to the city, to the residences or anything. Did you ever maybe have your meetings and say, you know, we have a residential area, there's 50 homes, we've got all these ugly poles, your tree trimmers come out and they just don't cut the tree branch that affects that line? In fact, they were just here on Wood Dale Road. I don't know which way you're going home. But if you go north on Wood Dale Road and you look on the west side of the road, you'll see what your tree trimmers just did to our beautiful trees that Wood Dale cherishes. I mean, it's ugly. What I'm saying is, if you were to direct more of your transmission lines underground, your outages would diminish. And the perfect example is downtown Chicago. The whole loop downtown Chicago is underground. What are their outages? They never have an outage in a storm. The only time they have an outage is if a transformer goes. And like you say, the transformer's 25, 30, 40 years old. So I think ComEd should strongly consider taking some of these ugly lines and putting them underground, little by little. And I mean, $35 million in just one outage. If you had it happen three times a year, you probably spent over $100 million. I think $100 million can go a long way in not only beautifying the city of Wood Dale, but making the problems less enormous as they are now with homeowners who are the majority of your problems. Every hospital has a standby generator. Every almost municipal building has a standby generator. I have a standby generator. So standby generators are more and more common. And in fact, a lot of municipalities require through their codes that standby generators be installed in certain municipal hospital or whatever institutions they are. So I think you should direct all your meetings and your tributes to possibly putting more stuff underground.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Gus Fernandez, and I'm a businessman here in Wood Dale for about 26 years. I own Christie's Restaurant on Irving Park Road. And I have to agree with you, sir, Dan. The first about 12, 13, or 14 years, it was miserable. We had nothing but problems. The wind blew and we had no electricity. Then for about five years, we had nothing. I mean, nothing. Everything was beautiful. All of a sudden, the last few years, the wind blows again and we have no electricity. So what I like to know is, have you guys done any work around the Wood Dale area, any research? Or have you done any repairs, any equipment replacement? Because, you know, it's costing us a lot of money as businessmen. You know, two years ago, we had no electricity on Father's Day. Then this Father's Day, we had no electricity from Friday, 4:00, as you said, until Sunday night. So the insurance is not going to cover our cost. We're losing constantly money. Memorial Day, and there is another businessman here, he'll tell you, the lights went out, they came right back. And those power surges, what they do is they create a problem for our machinery. You know, the equipment goes bad, then you've got to call people the next day to fix them. And like Dan said, if you have a major storm, we understand. But when the wind blows and you have no electricity, you shouldn't get paid. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the audience? Up here, Alderman Wesley.
All right, I've got a couple of questions. I will tell you that my dad worked for ComEd for 34 years for your company, so I know how the system works pretty much hand in hand. I understand the power outage, priorities of police and all that. I have a problem, and it's unfortunate that most of my power outage in this committee, and I will tell you, it's my ward, Ward 4, which is over here, and Ward 2. And they do have, most of their ward is underground, they do have problems, no doubt about it. But it just seems like whenever we lose power in our ward, I am out three to four days. I've been two times now, I've been out three to four days. All right, three or four days, okay? It's uncalled for, okay? The other day, sunny could be, I lost power for three hours at my house. You know, it needs to be addressed. The problem is, I have seniors that live over here, they lose power. I have one that keeps a medicine insulin in a refrigeration, and she was out three to four days. I got people in this ward that have oxygen units, that have ventilators. And you kill them for three or four days. You need to address that, okay? I understand storms are the issue, but three to four days need to stop. I mean, I don't know what you've got to do, but you need to focus on getting this power up. I understand if you're taking priorities. I understand you've got your red and you've got your green or your blue ticking, and this is priority over this one. I understand that. But there's also a way that you could switch some of these outages onto another feeder, and you can't tell me you can't do that. Could you do that?
In a large-scale storm event that takes out multiple feeders, it either reduces or eliminates our ability to do that kind of switching. Normal day like today, systems network, feeder A goes down, you know, we can go and throw switches or automatically throw switches to restore power. And, but in a large storm event where you've got multiple feeders out of service, those ties don't exist. We do what we can through those ties in those situations. But, you know, we run the risk of overloading feeder A with feeder B's load, that type of thing. So that's one of the steps that they do go through to restore customers, even in storms, is switching. But like I said, a lot of times, big enough storm goes through, you've got numerous feeders locked out. Those feeders aren't available to switch.
Well, we lose power in our ward when it's sunny out. And we aren't out one hour or two hours. We're out three or four, five hours, sometimes eight hours. And you can't tell me with that small area, you can't pick that up quicker. There's got to be a way.
Well, that's where we collected dresses through Jaffa Wally, and we have reliability engineering review those specific outages and see what delayed the restoration, if there was some circumstance that occurred that delayed the restoration.
All right, I understand. May I continue? I've got a couple more, or you want to wait?
Go ahead.
Okay. We happen to go around and we talked about equipment replacements in the community. I have, and I'll be more than happy to give these to you tonight. We have pictures in our community with poles that are leaning almost on the ground that have not been looked at, have been called in, has not. There's been a pole on Grove Street over here, on the ground, a new pole, that's sat there for almost five weeks now, and has not been installed. There's poles leaning in these people's backyard, there's a kid's play in the backyard, that I guarantee you, one windstorm's going to fall down and may electrocute some of these kids in the backyard. I don't know how you go about handling that situation. I would be more than happy to give these to you tonight. The other issue we have with our community, and I'll be totally honest with you, streetlights, okay? You were provided a list from streetlights. There's been streetlights, there's one streetlight here that's been in, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, has been called in five times already, okay? Still ain't repaired. My other question is, but if we tell you we aren't paying the bill, you're going to cut the service off. We still pay for these streetlights regardless. We still pay for them. And we shouldn't be paying for these streetlights if we can't get them repaired. Why does it take five times for a call and it still ain't repaired? We have one that was called in January, January 12th, 2010. As a 7-1 of 10, it still ain't repaired, okay? Where are we drawing the line? If I don't want to pay your bills, and I'll tell you one thing, I'm about ready to say we aren't paying the light bills for these, and I guarantee you, your company will send us a letter saying, we're going to cut your power off. And don't tell me you won't do that, because I know you will. So how do we address this issue?
We get our construction and maintenance people that manage that process involved and say, hey, look, you know, these are either underground cable faults that are, either haven't been fixed, or they fixed there and it goes bad over there and the cable needs to be replaced. That's another, that's another form of cable replacement is the underground streetlight cable. So that's the kind of thing that they manage that process. So we'll engage them and-
So how long do we wait then when we call this in? So if we don't want to pay the bill on these streetlights, we'll deduct it off the bill, would you credit us for that?
Generally, when the outage is called into us, there is a notation made on the account for that light, and it stops billing when it's repaired. And the repair order's closed out, then it goes back into a billing mode.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
As a city, we look at our streets, and we have a 20-year replacement program for the streets, the water lines, lines we have 40-year, and the sewer lines, we have a similar program. Do you do a comprehensive study of the entire city? And do you know whether it's transformers, lines, or whatever, where the weaknesses are in your system?
Like I said, we look at things in terms of circuits. So the circuit can start in a substation two towns away and serve customers in various communities before it gets to Wood Dale, for example. So we do those kinds of reviews on a circuit level, and we identify equipment that needs to be replaced, transformers that may be overloaded, underground cable that, you know, has given us a number of faults and replace that.
Okay, so you've looked at all the circuits in Wood Dale, and you understand where the weaknesses are in the system. And then the follow-up to that is, do you have a capital improvement program to replace those over the next five years, 10 years? And then the third question is, can we get a copy of it?
There's not a plan to just outright replace everything on feeder W-669.
No, I'm talking about the whole system. Number one, do you know where the weaknesses are? And number two, do you have a plan to repair the weaknesses?
Through the inspections that we do, we identify those weak points, and then we issue work orders to have those spots-
Not quite getting my question. Do you have a capital improvement plan to eliminate where the weaknesses and the problems are in Wood Dale?
I would say yes. We've got a number of programs that fall under our capital dollars. Cable replacement, I'm sorry, the targeted programs to, you know, identify specific issues on the lines.
So is there somewhere a plan that in 2010, you'll do Circuit W-0105? And 2011, you'll do W-0107? Is there such a plan that exists?
In the section where we break down electrical system improvements, we break out the capacity-related improvements, reliability improvements, and then vegetation management improvements. And we identify the circuits that were-
I read that, and it gives me 2009, 2010. What I'm getting at, is there a comprehensive program that you'll invest X amount of money in the system over the next 10 years to identify the weaknesses and fix the weaknesses in the system?
We do it on an annual basis, so we're preparing right now the review of the circuits from 2010's performance, and we're identifying what needs to be done before summer of 2011 on those particular circuits.
So it's year by year, but not a comprehensive program to take care of the weaknesses in the system?
We budget going forward millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars on a system basis.
Let me try one more time. There's no comprehensive plan like in 20 years, every circuit gets replaced in Wood Dale?
Not from the substation out. We're going to look at them each year, look at the performance, look at areas that need improvement.
So basically, it's as something fails, then you fix it. But there's no comprehensive maintenance program?
Correct. Under our current rate structure, we have to go with, you know, overhead service as a standard, and we have to maintain the system under the money we're allotted through the rates that we charge, governed by the Illinois Commerce Commission. And we have to take that money and spend it on reliability, capacity improvement, all types of things. And the gross dollars are budgeted going forward. And then the reliability engineers in particular take from those funds and say, okay, in Wood Dale, we're going to do cable diagnostic testing on feeder W-689. We've identified a section of cable that needs testing. And then that job gets drawn up and scheduled. Mid-circuit reclosers, we identify circuits that we can install mid-circuit reclosers on. We install those. We do other, you know, the underground cable work on a feeder-by-feeder basis.
Any other questions? Alderman Lewitin.
Thank you, Alderman Shawkey. John O'Halloran, I'd like to say that first of all, you know, we've listened to your presentation, and you talked about how the storms affect the electrical grid and how you come out there and you save the day. And you talked, basically to me, if I was listening to a sports announcer, I would say you're talking about all your home runs. But we called you here to talk about how many times you strike out. I talked to several people in the ward over the last week, and I gave them copies of your 2009 report called "The Reliability Charts." And I've had feedback from them, and recently, I got an email from one of the people that I spoke to. And he wanted to speak tonight, but couldn't make it. And he sent an email, and he asked if I'd read it for him. And this is from Norbert Martin of 385 North Edgewood Avenue.
Alderman Lewitin, I don't know if we should be giving out private numbers or addresses.
Well, if these people come here and they stand up over here, they have to say who they are and identify themselves.
They're not here. They're not present. I don't know if that would be appropriate.
Well, he signed it. It's a form, it's a letter.
You can perhaps meet with the gentleman after the meeting or after-
I think it deserves to be written, read here. Mayor reads letters from citizens during open session. I think there's no difference between this letter. It's just an email, but it's an important email. It's a man's choice of words. And actually, he hits the nail right on the head, as you did. Dear Mr. Lewitin, thank you for your extra effort distributing the ComEd information. I will not be able to attend because of curriculum night at Wood Dale High School. The questions I would ask Mr. O'Halloran is the following. I certainly understand weather outages, tree contact to the primary cable, and animal-related outages are to be expected and tolerated. Planned outages for maintenance and new construction, and even an error by contractor is understandable. 29 outages do not fall in that group, but are under the heading of equipment failure and malfunctions. If the equipment and infrastructure is in poor shape, when will it be repaired? Are any upgrades on the drawing board? There is a few circuits that have repeat outages due to underground failure. Are these being looked at for preventative measures? That's the letter. And I'm just going to say right now, Mr. Martin's comments, the mayor's comments, Alderman Shawkey's comments, Carl's comments, they're all the same. We look like we're, we all had a conference because we're all saying the same thing. We give you accolades for your home runs in storms. But we watch you strike out and servicing the equipment. And I'll just end this by saying, I concur with the mayor on his opinion. There should be a program that says, we will fix this. We want to be inoculated, not given penicillin after the disease strikes.
Alderman Cadella.
Picking up on what the mayor started to talk about, I'm going to say something that I think a lot of us in this room are thinking. And I'm not going to, I'm going to try not to be harsh. It's not a personal attack. But every other company in this country that has to perform and produce and make money, that's not a monopoly, has a capital improvement plan that goes beyond a 12-month period. When I was a facility manager, if I didn't have that, I wouldn't have been a facility manager for very long. I couldn't let a chiller fail before I addressed it. I couldn't let a chiller almost die before I, you know, before it was time to look at it and talk about replacement and hope that the generic monies of next year's capital improvement plan are going to cover this. So I don't know what, as a citizen, as a ComEd customer, as an Alderman of Wood Dale, I can do. But I can express some level of displeasure in that I don't have a choice. I think I have to buy my power from ComEd, and I'm okay with that. But there's a finite lifespan to your equipment. I think, I think I heard you say that. Underground cable has 30 to 40 years. You know how long a typical transformer has. You know that a transformer from 1975 has a different lifespan than a transformer from 2007. You know that cable have, you know, cable now has better insulating jackets on them, so the newer ones may last longer. And I'd be disappointed to find out that you didn't know exactly what every transformer was, when it was put into service, who's the manufacturer, exactly what type of cable you have everywhere. And if that information exists, and you have enough staff to be able to put a plan together, a 10-year capital improvement plan doesn't mean that that's exactly what you're going to do in 10 years. But it means that this is, this is what we know is going to fail in about 10 years, and we have to start addressing it. And I'm approaching this from a different level than most customers would, only because of my involvement in the construction industry and in facility management. But I, but I guess, like I said, my biggest issue is, and it's like Alderman Eugene Wesley here said, I mean, we have to pay. Otherwise, we don't get power, everybody in this room does. But we don't have a say in how the company is managed. Now, I'm certainly not going to say that I know much at all about how to run ComEd. I am not at all, in any way, shape, or form, an engineer qualified to speak on the subject of these types of equipment. But I was, I was going to hope to not have to say anything here tonight, but when the mayor asked a question and he gave us an answer that there's no, there's no long-term plan to address those pieces, those pieces of equipment that you know have a limited lifespan, I got really disappointed. And I don't suggest that it's your job, but somewhere up the, up the ComEd corporate food chain, somebody purposely has made a decision not to do that. And maybe it's because the system is too big for the organization to have to handle it. I don't know what the, I don't know what the issue is. I know it's, has, you know, nothing or very little to do with any decision you can personally make or anything you can, you know, go back and personally say to those corporate entities. But it's, it was- But it's, it was-